Let me know. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for Monday, December 20th of 2021. This evening, we have four members of the planning board present. Bob Schaffer may call in. He is overseas in the Middle East at this time, so we expected him tonight, but he's not on the line, so we will start the meeting with the four of us. We also have Joe Janowitz from the town staff, town planner, as well as Sierra Pelletier with us this evening for town staff. Okay. As always, we start with open forum. So, Joe, is there anything that the town staff has for open forum?
Nothing in particular, I guess, other than the petitions for, if anybody's here, for the petitions for Diane Lane or Colonel Rolls, they did request to withdraw without prejudice this evening, so those items may be quick on the agenda.
Yeah.
But otherwise, nothing for me. Sierra might have something to vote.
I do. So, the EV working group that you voted to establish and all of that, it seems that they may want to change the name, which would require approval from you, so we're going to put it on the January 3rd agenda for your discussion and vote.
Okay.
Just wanted to give you a heads up.
Good. Do we know what the name is? They want to change it too?
I believe it's Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment Working Group instead of Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. I'll have to double check, but I think that that's what they're proposing.
Okay. Make sense? Great. Go to the board. Does anybody on the board have any items for open forum?
Nope.
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 Neither. Does anybody in the audience have anything they would like to bring up for open forum? All right. Seeing none, then we'll move on to our public hearing items. And the first public hearing item is PB 2136, a modification to a site plan review to allow for an expanded use of the mill works in buildings 13 and 16. That is PB 2136, as I said before. Applicant is with us this evening. Good evening.
Chris Yule. Paul is out of town tonight, I think.
Oh, okay. He's getting a sleigh ready so he can deliver presents to the good girls and boys of greater west.
He and the family are somewhere in Utah, I think. Have a wonderful time, I hope.
So, would you like to kick us off, or?
Sure. We've been working with Henry Fontaine of the building department, and Ron Parsons, and Mike Dennehy of the fire department. We've reached agreement on all points. The plan has been updated, and there was some questions raised by Joe late last week, so we left it that prior to any actual paint hitting the pavement.
Yep.
There'll be one more working session to confirm that everybody's clear on what's going to be done.
Yep.
And that, at that point, will be just as built, but everyone will be in agreement, and Henry has asked to attend that as well.
Great.
Joe, I extended that to him, even though we didn't talk about that.
Sure. So, your desire this evening is to make sure that the board is comfortable with what's in the plan set that we're looking at in the packet tonight?
Yes.
And just get it clear to, like, move forward and start putting down paint, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have been talking to contractors. They're looking to get it on their schedule, which means, they hope. Yes, the weather obviously is.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing reliable, but we intend to put pressure on to get it done as soon as possible and not just wait till April.
Yep, yep.
If there's any chance of getting it done sooner, we will.
Yep.
We want to get this over with and get back on the good graces of humanity.
Yep. Awesome. Okay, understood. So, if there's nothing further from you guys, I guess we can go to the board to discuss the revised plans here that we see in the, I guess, the marked up plans that we see in the packet. Somebody care to go first? Darren, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'm really, I'm curious. I want to see what it looks like when it's painted, when it's striped, because I was down there Saturday. I was down to watch an event. It was great. It was a good crowd down there and stuff, but it was a little rainy, so it was dark, and it was very hard to see sort of, you know, where the lines were and stuff like that. So, I'm looking forward to seeing it restripped and much more visible. So, that's my own.
I think that's where everybody feels.
Yeah, no, I think it's going to be helpful, because you come in, especially on a job like that, there's not much lighting associated when you come in, so it's going to be great to be able to see a little better direction where you can go in. And then the signs, too. And I just, I guess my question there is, you know, we talked about signs before. I think they were on order. I just want to see if there's a status update on those as well.
We're trying to have the signs be done by the same sign contractor that did the Abbott Mill signs, because they were so beautiful, it came out so well, and he's done all of our signage, and that has been really a positive thing. So, we've been talking to them about what their schedule looks like, and it may be where, if they have a problem with scheduling, it probably has to do more with installation than fabrication, and fabrication is what we care about. So, it may be that, as long as they can manufacture the signs, we'll arrange for their installation. That will speed things up and give us a higher quality result. So, that's what we're currently working on, and that will be in the real soon now category as well, just as soon as we can get it done, because not having the signs hurts us as well, and we want to get that done.
So, you don't have a date yet for signage? So, nothing has been done for the signage?
We expect a proposal within a week or so.
And that includes the signage out by the entrance, too, right?
Yes, everything.
Yeah, good.
Also, the sign between the two projects.
What about handicap signs?
Those are that you just purchased off the street.
Yeah, I was going to say, you don't need a company, special company.
That's right. Yeah, they have to comply with the handicap specs, and sign company stuff is all handmade.
Do they have the handicap permit?
Yes.
They've been installed?
It's going to be, it's all going to be reinstalled when we relocate it and restripe everything. We'll just start from scratch and do it all over.
Yeah, I was just saying, because I was going out, and there was somebody who hadn't been there before on Saturday, and they said, oh, where do you turn in? Because it's hard to see out. It'd be nice to have my sign out there and then internally, too.
Just unofficially, we are going to be keeping an eye on this in the future, and if there are other tweaks that we can do, like maybe some arrows here and there, or some other striping, we'll be happy to do that if it makes life smoother and eliminates a little bit more friction over there. That would, we're not just closing the book on this.
Great.
Great. Thanks.
All set? Okay. Mike?
So, you know, I've got, you know, I went through our packet, and I see Attorney Alvin's research on how you don't have to comply with any sound regulations. And I do recall from the first meeting in September, the complaint about the lights, and then I see your email from the 13th of December saying that maybe two to three weeks after you received their decision, that you could get working on the lights. You know, I don't know how much has been done since September. Maybe you can tell me what has been done since September.
That was just an outside date. What we were trying to do was to get clarity on exactly what the requirement was going to be, and until there was a final decision by the board, we weren't sure exactly how that would.
I think my point is, you know, you're kind of coming with the cart before the horse to us, and for me, anyway, you know, a little bit of help for the neighbors would have gone a long way, you know? Instead of outright, you know, we don't have to comply with sound issues, and, yeah, we'll look at the lights two, three weeks after we get our decision. And these neighbors have been dealing with this since September. You know, again, I don't know what's been done.
I can answer that.
Okay.
There are timers on the lights. It's my understanding that they weren't working properly for some reason, and so those are being repaired, and we're.
They haven't been repaired, or they are, they will be?
We're in the process of it. I haven't heard of the electrician.
Yeah.
He told me end of last week that there are timers on all the lights, and I asked him last week to look into the placement of shields on the lights, either that or replacing the lights, and he's working on that right now. We're not waiting for approval. I thought that what was being asked of us was an outside absolute firm time that come no matter what it could be done, and we're trying to get it done now. So, that was my misunderstanding, and we have been talking with the neighbors, and we have been in communication, just to make sure that if there are concerns about the noise, that we address them immediately. And I think, in terms of Paul's comment, my understanding was, he was asking for clarification as to what regulations exist that we need to comply with, and nobody has supplied us with any of that information, so we're simply trying to be good neighbors. And we don't know of any regulation that specifically governs this, and we've been told that recreational activities are not subject to the law that was quoted. So, that question is outstanding, and if someone knows of that law.
You know what? And I think the planning board's aware that we can't regulate that, right? So, my point is, as you say, being a good neighbor, right? Good face with the neighbors, goodwill with the neighbors would go a long way, so.
Yes, and we have been doing that.
Just add, I mean, I personally went to the neighbors, and we met in their house, and we had a long discussion. They told me exactly where they heard the sound coming from, and at what hours and what times. So, I wasn't, you know, spent an hour in fact there, and they told me throughout the year, in the wintertime, there's zero sound, just because we're more inside, we're in the coolest terms here now, but so I'm very aware, very cognizant. We've complied in terms of the doors being closed, not having used it since that time as well. So, it's not that we're not complying with the neighbors, we're not goodwill, but, you know, we've definitely extended all of the branch, and want to make sure we're good neighbors. We don't want any issues either way.
And one small detail is, I noticed that there are no lights on the back of the buildings that are the subject of this application. There are four lights on Building 17, which was part of the previous application, and we're going to do it anyway. It doesn't, I don't know what the law is on what applies to what, but I don't care. We're going to fix the lights regardless.
Okay. Yep. Kate, do you have some comments? I noticed that the applicant did put the building numbers on the plan.
Yes, I want to thank you for finally, after multiple requests, putting the building numbers on there, so that these, the buildings under question also have numbers, as well as the buildings that are not under discussion. On the plan, I had a couple of questions based on what I remember from the discussions in here. Like, for Building 13, I see you have an HP ramp. I guess that means handicap?
Yes.
And there's not going to be an entrance there, so is that going to just be for emergency exits? Is that why it's there?
That's correct.
Okay. And.
It's already built.
Great. And in front of Building 17, on, yeah, the entrance at Building 17, it says drop-off area and then fire lane, and I thought the discussion had been that the fire did not want drop-off there.
No, as long as they had their fire lane, they wanted the two fire lanes immediately on the corner. They basically want both sides of that corner, so they can pull in wherever they want to, and the area after that is drop-off, but not the area in front of it.
I did have a discussion with engineering and the fire department this afternoon. To Mr. Yule's point, I do think there'll need to be one more meeting where all parties involved to make sure it's very clear what the fire department is looking for.
Okay.
When they saw that there was a mix of drop-off, once they understood there was going to be a mix of drop-off and fire lane in the same area, they were concerned about having those types of uses right next to each other. So, I think there'll be, have to be one more meeting just to clarify.
That's great.
Where it's just fire lane, where maybe just drop-off, to keep those kind of things separate from each other.
One more planning board meeting, or one more meeting?
One more meeting between town staff and the applicant.
All right, great.
That's the meeting we talked about in the beginning.
Yep. I want to make sure I'm very clear, so thank you.
And thank you for keeping track of the noise and such. We had some emails, late emails today. You might not have had a chance to see them. So, there were some emails from people on Pershing that they had heard loud music recently, and I guess they talked with you or somebody.
We had a, there was a pickleball rental. They had a pickleball Christmas holiday party. I wasn't aware they had some music when I heard. I was out for like an hour when I heard we had done a call, and we were just anyway, and we turned it right on.
Yeah, great.
As soon as something comes up, we weren't aware in the beginning that that was going to happen, right? It was just a holiday party, cookies, pickleball all night, yes. And as soon as it happened, it was good.
Yeah.
They were very nice about it.
The seniors get pretty rowdy.
Pickleball, yeah. You know? Great. And then there was another email. Our head, the head of our health department, she's also our environmental, whatever the title is, did contact the state. There's a state DEP, DEP or someplace.
Yes.
Regarding, do you want to talk about it, Sierra?
Oh, I really just saw this for the first time today, but I think it was sent out a while ago and got kind of lost in the, in the mix, because we understood that the planning board doesn't, you know, directly regulate noise. So, it, since the issue came up again, you know, we did a little bit more digging and found this, this email from her. And so, I haven't had, I haven't actually looked, read every word of it yet, so I'm not 100% sure, but to the best of my knowledge, the Board of Health generally would be the ones who would handle some sort of noise issue, and so very generally, you know, you shouldn't be causing noise that is any sort of detriment to the abiding properties, and there are ways to enforce that. But, again, planning board, you know, can't really.
But the comment, because Attorney Alvin had submitted some, some, the language for the state regulation concerning noise and, and how if you apply for a permit for a sports event and such, and he thought that because you're a sports complex, that then the noise requirements didn't apply, but she had checked with the state. And again, I'm sure the staff will forward this email to you that, no, that's only for special events like outdoors, like a soccer game or something, but for, for a facility where sports is what you do, then, then you do have to comply with noise requirements.
This has been sent to us? We, I haven't seen it.
I don't know if it's been forwarded.
It was not forwarded to you. I did not realize that it hadn't been forwarded to you earlier, so.
But the plan is to send it to us?
Now it is.
Just asking.
Yes, no, absolutely. We'll send that to you tomorrow morning, if not tight.
We'll work with it.
Yeah.
We don't have a problem.
And I haven't, I saw that that came in late, and I haven't had a chance to read it here.
Yeah.
But I can confirm, I mean, when Bob and I were working on some of the language with the drive-through thing, the only place in the bylaws today that, that noise is addressed is in major commercial projects. So, there is no general noise ordinance in the bylaws.
Yeah.
I think we did at that time call out that that might be an area for us to consider maybe putting a more general bylaw in place at some point when we get, you know, occasionally we get around to the bylaws and we make adjustments to them, and a general, you know, noise ordinance could be something that would be of interest and use to the town in the future, I think.
Yeah, so I was interested. Thank you, Sierra. I hadn't realized that noise would come under the Board of Health, so for them and for us. So, I see our building commissioner is here, because I was wondering if we had any leeway to put anything in the order of conditions, because noise has been a big concern.
Really, only if it was something that was agreed to by the applicant. Otherwise, your jurisdiction is very limited in terms of what you can do for noise.
Yeah. Like, I was thinking one thing would be that the doors on the backside of the building cannot be open except for an emergency, something like that. And then, this would probably be for somebody else then. I was thinking that if they were, if complaints continue, that because it is an all-metal building, that at some point, it might behoove the owner, Mr. Yule, if you actually put something on the inside of the building and the backside to try and tone down the noise that's going out towards the back of the building, towards Pershing. You know, if, if this continues to be a problem, it's going to have to be addressed. I under, it's, I would have loved it if it were in our orders, but it seems.
To our understanding, we are in compliance, and the neighbors have been positive in their comments to us, and that one time that there was some music that we weren't aware of, it was handled immediately, and there haven't been any more issues. So, I'm assuming that if we continue in that vein, the problem will self-correct, and we won't have to worry about it. We just stay on top of it, that's all.
Yeah, but I, but if there's recurring complaints, not from multiple, it's not, like I said, it's not our bailiwick, unfortunately, but.
Well, if it goes in the regulations in the future, I would think that would bind everybody, including us.
Yeah, yeah.
So, if you do change the regs, we will be bound by it, the same as everybody else.
And I, okay, and I did have a comment.
Doesn't require anything on this document, I don't think.
I did have a comment about the lights, and I had mentioned this to Attorney Alvin last time. I don't know if he mentioned it to you, but the lights, as you have stated before, are there from a previous, the previous owner's previous uses, and my question was, are the lights even needed still, especially if they're only on the one building? So, my question was, I appreciate you're going to either replace them or put on shields, but the other question was, if you don't even need them, why not just get rid of them?
I'll look into it. I always assumed it was a light safety matter, and that if there was a need for people to evacuate the building, they need light, and every other time we've had doors, there were lights.
Yeah.
I don't know why some of them do and some of them don't.
Yeah.
But at some point, we'll have to look into that and be a little more precise about it. Otherwise, I don't disagree with you at all. Who wants to pay a light bill if you don't need it? Never mind. It's irritating people. But in the meantime, we'll put shields on it regardless.
Okay. Maybe if you end up replacing them, that might be a time where you could think of getting one for Building 13, one for Building 16, one for Building 18, one for 17, instead of having them all only in one building.
Yes, and what else, what you notice now is, you don't see those kinds of wall pack lights anymore. Nobody wants light pollution, and it used to be that unless you were throwing light everywhere, you weren't a real facility. It was just a cultural thing, and I think that's gone by. Now, everybody has those smaller lights, that we actually use them indoors in the building for nightlights. They're so discreet, and we use them around Building 15, so that people can follow the driveway around the building. They're beautiful, and they're just very delicate. You can see them from a distance, but they're not pollution at all. So, the whole industry has cleaned up its act, I would put it that way. So, I think anything that goes in there in the future is going to be 100 times better, no matter what. So, I think it would be self-correcting again, because that's where everybody wants to be now, and those things use a lot of energy. So, we have gotten rid of some of the wall packs, so eventually it will go.
Okay. And I, I only had a comment when we, if, when we start talking about the decisions.
Yeah, which, it sounds like that we're not, we're not going to be taking that action tonight. I mean, you're saying that another meeting has to happen with this combined drop-off and fire lane zones, right?
It's up to the will of the board, really. We tried to write the decision such that striping needs to occur prior to any kind of certificate inspection is done on Buildings 13 and 16.
Yep.
But it's up to the board if you wanted to table this until that meeting happens.
Yeah.
That's perfectly up to you.
Okay.
If you wanted to have those go concurrently, we're happy to do that.
So, I guess maybe what's the will of the board? Do we want to take a decision this evening, or would we prefer to have the, like, hear from the applicant again, once they've met with the town departments and looked at this combined drop-off and fire lane situation?
Much as I hate to have this come back again, I'd rather have everybody satisfied before we go on to the decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can agree. If that, if we have a one final set of plan, that's, even at that point, it might even be approved. I mean, it's not going to be as built at that point, though. But it might be stamped at that point, saying this is the final thing. I'd rather see that.
As long as the fire department, everybody else is happy. Be a quick meeting and.
But the fire department already told us they were happy, and we really need to get this done. It's really hurting us to not be able to operate.
I know.
And I don't understand what we're doing, because all we said was that we need to confirm it, and if there's any last minute changes. I thought the whole point was that the fire department was doing this, and that we would simply agree, and that all of us would say, fine, that's what they want, we would endorse it, but not for more delays. We need to, I would beg for you to.
Could it be done next week? Because it would, they would really need to be on our only January.
Okay, it was January 3rd, which isn't that far away. And again, when, when I spoke to Don Parsons and Paul Sterrett earlier this afternoon, Don was concerned when he saw, when he understood that there was going to be a mix of drop-off and fire lane together. So, again, I think it's worth town departments, the applicant, meeting one additional time, getting the plan updated, so the right thing is put on the ground, and everybody's happy with it.
I would, I would say if we can try to get that done earlier than later, I mean, it's obviously the holidays, but.
I'm in the hospital next week. I have surgery coming, so it's going to take a little longer for me to, unless I can do it this week, but I just.
Yeah, I think it's, makes sense to see the final, fully approve it. Everyone's going to be on board before we approve it.
Okay, so it sounds like we're not prepared as a board to take a decision this evening, Mr. Yule. My, my only comment, are you, are you done otherwise?
Yeah.
With regard to the, the noise and the sound of the neighbors, I do think, you know, my recollection is that, I think the neighbors occasionally hear things like bouncing basketballs and things like that. I think they're fairly accepting of that. The three cases I remember of, of essentially noise complaints were, I think it was early in the process, it may have been the first application, there was comments around, like, an actual basketball tournament where some sort of hype-up music or something was playing. I think you spoke to that, I think.
It was actually, it was a summer clinic.
A summer clinic, whatever, yeah. And there was some music being played, and I think there was a comment on that. I think the other comment I remember hearing is, I think you guys had an outside event actually last summer that the neighbors were able to hear, where you used a lawn.
We've never had any outside events, ever. We've, we've, we've never.
The doors might have been open or something.
That would be the same, I think it's the same incident you're talking about, is when the door was opened.
Oh, okay.
That morning for that clinic, just against the mayor and the, and I wasn't aware of it, and they.
And, and now there's this pickleball. And so, it seems like it's always tied to, like, the playing of loud music in the facility, more than the actual use of the facility, so, yeah. I mean, I think the good news is, I mean, from what I've seen, every time somebody calls you, a neighbor calls you, you guys take pretty quick action. It seems like the issue is resolved, so I think that's good.
But it needs to get to the point where the neighbors don't have to call.
Agreed. I, I would agree. I mean, I think that that's, I think the takeaway here is maybe we just avoid, or, or maybe you guys figure out, like, you know, music in the facility can only be at this level, because if it's louder than that, it's going to irritate the neighbors. The lights, I think the lights have been covered. I think, you know, whether they're turned off, or whether you put some sort of a shield on them, I think, you know, action could be taken on that sooner than after the decision, in my opinion. And then, yeah, my only question with regard to the striping was exactly the combined fire lanes, but, uh, fire lane and drop-off areas, and I guess that's going to be addressed with a meeting, and then we'll hear it again. So, so.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
You said combined fire lane and drop-off. That's not what this is. It's a very distinct striped areas. I just want to make sure.
Okay, I'll, let me rephrase. Contiguous.
Okay.
And if it actually, maybe by that time, we can get an update from the signs as well. I'd love to see a status if we can get, like you said, is a kind of pending order there. I'd love to see an update on that as well.
Okay.
And, and just to confirm, have you received the new check?
You've not, at this point.
New check?
For the reduced fee?
I was told the opposite. What, what is it that we're supposed to do?
So, you originally, with the, with the application, you had submitted $3,000 to reduce to have the fee down to $300.
Right.
The board last week decided to have the application fee be $1,500, so we'll need a, a new check for $1,500. You'll get your $3,000 check back.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought the $3,000 check had been deposited, and I was told there was some kind of a refund coming back.
Waited to, waited on that to see what the board would do.
$1,500 check.
And you'll get back your $3,000 check.
Okay, no, that's fine. I, I'm glad you figured that out.
Okay, yeah. It was hard, because you missed the beginning of the meeting last week, so.
Yes.
Joe, given Mr. Yule's plans to not be available next week, is there any opportunity that you can take to try to get this conversation to happen with the remainder this week, so we're in a position to see a final plan set on the 3rd? I mean, I can appreciate the applicant is, you know, has been delayed, you know, in, in making use of the buildings, you know, the additional buildings. So, we'd really like to put this to bed on the 3rd, in, you know, on the meeting on the 3rd if possible.
Yep, we'll do our best to coordinate schedules.
Great.
Great. That, well, I'm going to move to continue PB 2136, 22 Town Farm Road, Buildings 13 and 16, until the next planning board meeting, January 3rd, 2022, 7:00 PM, meeting in this room, unless otherwise noted.
Second. We do not need to do roll call tonight. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, stand. All those opposed, abstained? Great, motion carries. Uh, good luck with your, uh, situation and your surgery next week and hope to see you on the 3rd.
Thank you.
Yep. All right.
Can we do roll call just because it's fun?
You need to get help more.
Like conservation, they say aye and raise their hand. So it's on, so it's on video.
Very good. All right, the next item, uh, before us tonight in, uh, public hearing items is number two, which is PB 2145, uh, special permit, um, in the subdivision rules and regulations for the construction of a common driveway at 22 Griffin Road, uh, also known as the Cloverleaf Fields subdivision. Good evening, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I move reopen the public hearing.
Uh, okay, yes, thank you. Uh, motion to open the second. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Uh, do we need to waive the reading?
You can't, you read it.
Oh, I read it a little bit, okay.
Well, whatever's in here is basically the public hearing notice.
Yeah, I know, but I paraphrased it. Okay, whatever. Great.
Okay.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Chairman, member of the board, Douglas DeShane, uh, representing, uh, George Allen and Son Construction. George sitting here, George Allen sitting with me this evening. As you will recall, during the process of approving the subdivision, it was the determination that, uh, this would be best served by, um, rather than having a separate roadway onto Lot C, that we actually, uh, put a row, a driveway off of Cloverleaf Lane. And so we did, um, at the suggestion of the board, um, designed that and we have submitted, um, for a special permit. However, before we begin, I, I'd ask the board to consider my, uh, request for a waiver of the applicable fee request. You'll recall when we first discussed us doing this, the board felt that it would be amenable and therefore we did pay the fee, but I have submitted a request, uh, for a waiver of the fees. Want me to keep going?
It's, yeah, that's fine. We can take action on the waiver as the first order business once we're done.
Um, I, I will not spend a lot of time, uh, describing the, um, common driveway because as you can see, it, it's shown on the plans that were submitted. They've been reviewed by Mr. Starrett. Um, we have received comments from your fire police. I, I think this is a accumulation of what we had all been working towards. The only thing I will say is that, uh, the fire department did suggest, uh, 16 feet of pavement. We had proposed 12 feet because while I guess this is considered a common driveway, it's really only going to be utilized by the single house. So, um, uh, I, you know, we're here to discuss what the board thinks about whether the 16, uh, feet of pavement is a requirement.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, well, Ms. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, please.
I think maybe I can save us some time. Um, the Allens have suggested that they would be willing to do the 16-foot driveway if that's what your fire department wants.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
You make life easy.
Okay. Is that it?
If you have any questions, we certainly happen to answer them, but I didn't want to.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we've been through this quite a bit, so, you know.
Okay, so maybe first we should discuss, um, waiving the application fee for this application, given the fact that the applicant was before us and that this was run as a separate, uh, a separate application out of sort of necessity around timing. Yep. Yeah, I'm in favor of waiving the.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it as well, especially if they actually do the 16-foot driveway.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So shall we just?
Does staff have any comments?
Um, I do, just based on the, the number of, uh, board members we have right now. Since Mr. Bonfide had to refuse himself, you only have three sitting members right now for a special permit that requires a vote of four people. Um, so, um, just as a suggestion, it might be where staff, uh, taking time, develop a decision, for the board to review at the next meeting.
Yep.
And, um, maybe then Mr. Shavlo will have a chance to utilize the Mullen rule.
Yep.
To review the minutes, um, and then a vote could take place.
Thank you for noting.
Can we, can we vote on the waiver of the application fee, just the three of us?
That should, yeah, you can vote on the waiver, just the three of you.
Yeah.
But for the, for the actual special permit.
Okay, great. Would somebody like to put forward a motion on the waiving of the application fee?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor to waive the application fee for PB 2145, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Great, so the application fee's been waived.
All right, well, thank you very much and we will then respectfully request continuance to your January 3rd meeting. We have a decision ready. Hopefully Bob is.
Phone in.
We can find Bob.
Hopefully Bob turns up. Yeah, exactly. Motion to continue PB 2145 to the January 3rd planning board meeting here in, uh, meeting room 201 at Town Hall, 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained? Great.
Well, thank you and you guys all have a wonderful holiday. We'll see you in the new year. Although I'm going to hang around because I did have a continuance.
Yes.
That we filed last minute, so.
Yes, that's right, yep. Thanks for, uh.
Thanks for, uh.
Flexibility. Yeah, thanks for the flexibility on the 16 feet of pavement. That's great. Keep the fire department happy, that's always good.
I'll, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
All right. Okay. The next public hearing item, uh, before the board is PB 2102, which is a waiver request at 0-37 Carlyle Road, Diane Lane subdivision.
Thank you.
We're waiting for the applicant to rejoin us.
I thought there was a request to.
I think he's going to make that request.
Oh, okay.
You have to vote on that request, right?
You have to vote on it, Joe?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I guess we do.
Yeah.
Because it's been advertised, we love to take a vote.
And if we feel that we want to go through it and do whatever we want to do, then.
I think we need to make them do that work.
All right, we're just following up on our fire department, uh, with the building inspector.
Great, uh, well, we've moved on to the third public hearing item, which is PB 2102, uh, Mr. DeShane, and it's a waiver request at 0-37 Carlyle Road, so.
Yes, so I, um, did in fact send a request to withdraw this. Um, uh, you know, my clients, I was hoping we'd have a decision last week when, you know, we were trying to get the agenda filed, but, um, my client is actually, two things, quite frankly. One is, you know, based on the meeting we had last, it was clear that there was concern about water line and drainage line. So we, we understood that. He had been hoping as well to get a waiver to start, uh, you know, just the models, but as we all now know, um, you know, covenants, state law and local law does not allow that when you are protecting your roadways through a covenant. In other words, the covenant says no, no homes can be built until the binder is in place. So what we're doing now is working on a bonding structure to bond the roadway so that we can then ask the board to release the covenant and that way we could get a building permit for the models sooner than later, so.
Excluding utilities.
Exactly.
Okay.
So that is, that certainly made it clear that we would likely continue, or withdraw without prejudice so that, not, so as to not waste your time.
Gotcha.
I move that we approve withdrawal without prejudice for PB 2102, 0-37 Carlyle Road.
Thank you. Motion in a second to withdraw PB 2102, um, is on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Great.
Now I will wish you all a happy holiday and a wonderful new year and we'll see you on the 3rd.
Thank you very much.
And I, I have for you guys too, a, um.
All right.
Thank you.
Attorney Shane, that's the KMR, yours as well?
We're doing the same thing for control rolls?
Yeah, that one we, we withdrew last, yes. We withdrew last week, but yes.
Yeah, we do the same thing.
I move that we approve the request to withdraw the application without prejudice for PB 2024, uh, waiver requests for 0-1933 and 35 Hartford Road.
All right, motion in a second to withdraw PB 2024. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Great, that one is done. Thank you very much. Have a good holiday. Okay, that, um, brings us to the end of the public hearing items. The next item, uh, in front of us is a general business topic and that is PB 2010 for 17 Milo Road, Cricket Lane, a request to release the final $47,383 based on the previously approved tri-party agreement.
Yeah, so, so in this one, in this case, the certificates of occupancy have been issued. Engineering has been out there to, uh, inspect all the final construction. They're satisfied with what's been built out there. Um, we did talk with the applicant on it and, uh, one thing that they have agreed to do is to hold, allow staff to hold some money in escrow, uh, for the, so the full tri, tri-party agreement can be released in the event that through this first winter, the trees being planted, any don't survive, that there'll be funds available in order to try to replant and have trees replaced. So that way the, the money is kept out of the tri-party agreement, but is held in escrow by the town.
So, you say the money will be taken out of the agreement and held separately, or the?
Agreement would be fully released and done, but town would still have an escrow account. So that way, if there are trees that don't survive through the winter, through their first winter.
And how much are they holding?
Uh, enough for, for trees of, of the 11. So there were 11 trees total that were planted. We came on four, um, as a, as an acceptable amount, based on the bonding amount.
So this request is to release the final 47,383.
Correct.
But you're saying we need to hold some of it back?
Well, instead of continuing to have the tri-party agreement holding up the, the applicant, the discussion that we had was we'll release the full amount per the agreement, but separately, we would set up an escrow account with them.
So we have two votes. We have two votes tonight, one to release the tri-party agreement and release the funds and the second to approve the Form G or whatever.
Uh, I think it's just the tri-party agreement that you need to do. Just the vote on the, to release the tri-party agreement.
I think we usually, oh, okay. But there is a Form G and they're, and they're gonna.
I don't know if there's a Form G. Is there a Form G or is it just going to be an escrow amount agreed upon amount?
I mean, it sounds like it's.
But it, there has to be something somewhere.
So that we could release the entire bond, we brought in a check for $1,200 that went to the town of Westford and be held in their bond account.
Perfect, that's fine.
And that's already done and you already have some signed agreement with the town or something? Okay, so we don't have to approve anything for that. That, that was my question.
Great. Okay, all right. Oh, it seems cut and dry. Anyone like to put forward a motion?
I move that we, uh, release the previously approved tri-party agreement for 17 Milo Road, PB 2010, $47,383.
Second. Motion in a second, uh, on PB 2010, um, to release. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Great.
Thank you very much. Thank you for working with you.
Nice project.
Thank you.
I would add for the record there that the, uh, the escrow account for $1,200 will be deposited with the town, or is deposited with the town in the event that some of the trees here die.
Oh, I thought he already had, he's already given.
He's already due. Yeah, exactly. I'm just saying in case in future someone comes down the road and says, oh, wait, these guys released the tri-party and those trees died.
Right, right.
Nobody would do that.
No. All right, well, that gets us through general business. We're flying now. So, uh, all that's left is a review of the draft minutes from November 15th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes from November 15th, 2021?
So move.
Second, motion in a second. Is there any, uh, comments or would anyone like to comment on the meeting minutes?
You look good to me.
Nope. They looked okay to me as well. Great, motion in a second then to approve, uh, the minutes of November 15th, 2021. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Fantastic. Great. Wow.
So our minutes, stride is. Doing a great job.
Very good.
Let Dana know.
Okay.
I move that we close the hearing, meeting.
Adhere.
Adhere, that's what I'm looking for. Move that we adjourn.
Second. Motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Great. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, everyone.